I was going to turn it over to Tanner, but he's.
I have a question for Tanner.
Okay.
Just so we're respective, what was the total general fund budget this year and the proposed general fund budget in 2025?
So we appropriate, we appropriated, we accumulated a total of $21 million. We, or, I'm sorry, we appropriated for $21 million in, in '24.
Twenty-one million in general fund?
In the general fund, yep.
Does it start out with 14 that we had all the other supplement?
Yeah, we, sorry. In, in collected revenues, we received 20, we had appropriated for $21 million.
In revenue?
In revenue, yeah.
What, what was the actual?
We have brought in 19.5. Now, we accounted, we accounted for some of that with carryover.
Right, so you brought in 21.
So we're talking, we're still talking about 24.
Million, but what, what was the actual appropriations?
In '24?
In '24.
Let me go get it.
It started at 14.
Well. Yeah. So that has been the spaghetti plate to untangle, what we actually appropriated or what was approved to appropriate.
If I can tell you when we left the budget meeting.
Okay.
What we appropriated, but that, that's not what we ended at.
Right.
So that's what we left.
Thirteen seven, and then we have supplemental appropriations came in since then.
Yep.
So the other question I had is, is some of the budget line items had had what anticipated revenue is going to be and what the carryover is going to be. Obviously, at the end of the year, we don't want to spend all the carryover, so what's our anticipated carryover going into '26?
And that is where we run into some issues because right now, working with our new auditor and working with our treasurer, we are behind with bank reconciliations. So we've been working with our departments to try to find the carryovers within the departments. Some of those, we have more accurate figures and some we do not.
No, I think he's asking what you're expecting in revenue, what you're expecting to spend, and what you're expecting the carryover to be next year.
In '26?
In '26?
At the end of '25.
What's our anticipated carryo, we need to, we can't end '25 with zero balance.
Right, and we will not.
So, so what's our anticipated carryover going to be going into '26 with this budget?
I cannot answer that question at this time.
That's important, important to know.
Yep.
Because we can't end, we can't end the year with zero carryover.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so I'd just like to know, can we find that out?
We are actively working to find that out. If Mr. Mayville would like to come to the microphone, I will let him not to.
When I talked to previous auditor, when we went through budget things before, I said, Terry, we're not going to spend all this money that's appropriated. And he, and I said, is that anticipated for carryover? And he said, yes. So, you know, you can call it, did he hide it or what did he do? But, but he, he anticipated having carryover, which is an important thing to do for an auditor.
Well, and I, I guess I'd like to roll back the question because of, and frame it in a way that I guess I'm understanding it. When we are appropriating these things, you know, we call it a budget, and I'm going to use your phrase because I, I remember you using this.
Appropriations.
Right, these are appropriations. So we're essentially allowing ourselves to spend these dollars in these particular areas. If the revenue doesn't show up or if there's not supplemental appropriations, or if we find ourselves in the middle, it isn't my little joke, you know, if we find ourselves with COVID-25 or something like that that happens, then we can't execute some of these projects. If the revenue doesn't show like we anticipate, we keep using that phrase, anticipated revenues or anticipated projects, whatnot. If it doesn't show up, we can't do it. And we have to, in the administration with council, we have to make those hard decisions at that time. But as far as appropriating these dollars, we feel comfortable appropriating these dollars for the priorities that have been set for both the administration, the departments, and communicating with council for their, their desires. So as far as giving you an idea of what our current carryover from '24 into '25 and especially moving forward, no, we're not going to spend all this money. No, we're not going to spend all the city's money, of course not, that's reckless. But I think council needs to have, as we move forward with this particular budget going from '24 to '25, council needs to have at least of a, with this 20 minutes, council needs to have an idea of where we are, kind of reconciling our financial position now. And I think Paul can give you a better idea of, of that. So just maybe like a.
It'd be good to know when you find that figure, how that compares to what our carryover was going from '23 into '24, just so we have, just so we have a ballpark figure to know where we're at.
Yeah, and I, I can even say, you know, if, if council wants to write questions down, email me questions, you know, we have that budget work session on, on Thursday, I can, you know, aggressively try to find you information as much as I can and keep that communication going, but.
And Tanner, I was trying to find the email you sent me real quick, the, the anticipated revenue for next year, we have that figure.
Yes.
And that figure is?
We can work with David and, and get that in a, in a graph form that kind of tracks that. So what this budget did was basically mirror our, our revenues for this year, and we budgeted based off of that. Do you just want to give us a synopsis of what you guys are going through right now? And that will help us as we move forward.
Yeah, as you know, what I've been saying, it still holds true. We're still struggling with getting all of the information in auditor's office, understanding it and figuring it out. It, it's still a daily process. I appreciate the administration and Tanner specifically of taking on the budget. I haven't had much to do with the budget. I can't contribute much to the budget. I, I don't know, you know, how we would answer any of your questions right now. We don't understand how the carryo, carryover is, is going to be, how we're going to figure it out. There's many different things that are affecting that, and we're working towards that every day to try to correct it. So knowing the carryover for this year is going to be challenging, knowing it for next year is, is going to be even more. My understanding of where we're at right now is, and I, again, appreciate what Tanner has done with the budget, we just need to, to get going on this and, and get a conservative budget. We get a conservative budget, and then we're going to learn, this, next year's going to be a learning process. We're going to figure things out, we're going to learn a lot, and we're going to figure out what is the right thing to do and what is the wrong thing to do. And then when we go into 2026, we're going to be much stronger with that. But I don't have a lot of information to give you about this budget.
I like the narrative and how it project what we're going to do in July, August, and September, and whatever, that's important.
Yeah.
But what we need to do is we need to have a budget now.
Right.
And we need to feel comfortable with what that budget's going to be, and that we're going to have carryover now and carryover into '26, so we're comfortable where we are financially with the city.
Yeah. And we've been able to do that with some of the, especially the more of those non-general funds, those dedicated funds, we can track the projects, we can track, you know, we have a better idea with the, the revenues that are especially appropriated or allocated between, you know, whether they're license fees or taxes from gas and things like that. I look at, you know, the Public Works Department and, and our Utilities Department, they're right on top of it, they have a better idea of, you know, what those fees are. When it comes to our, our general fund, we keep using the phrase spaghetti plate. It's really like untangling a spaghetti plate, why things are paid out of certain ways, how we've done things in the past. What we have been focusing on is, one, making sure, and you've seen a lot of it this year, as we reappropriate dollars, taking it out of workers' comp or insurance or whatever to reappropriate it into, you know, paying the light bills. If the money needs to be in a certain place, and I, I even look at our engineer in the, in the, in the audience here, if we know that we need contract engineering, if we know that we need to pay the streetlights, and we need to go ahead and appropriate that cost, and we have those costs in mind, so we need to set that up. And this is not, keep in mind, this is not an interim budget plus a supplemental budget, this is the budget for the entire year. So if we have to have the approval of council to spend at least that amount, and we have a good idea of what we're spending, and we need the approval to spend that amount for that fiscal year. And that's kind of the anticipation, or that's kind of the direction that we're going with this. And as Mr. Mayville has mentioned, we're going to keep learning, and we're going to keep trying to make this a more transparent and sensible process. And that's why we tried to do it this way, as opposed to, and you all have access to that, that live document, and I want to comment on, Tammy, we had that conversation earlier. You know, this is a process. Right now, we've got, you know, the, the totality of the general fund and totality of the non-general fund, those will change. When we talk about, you, maybe you've all seen the different tabs, I, I know we talked about 1760, and I, I've talked to Lisa and I think, we talked to Rob here in a second ago. We need to get some more information about that particular thing, it's only 3,000 bucks, but still, the more important thing is how that's being operated. And even in the conversation we just had right now, we're not quite sure about, there were, we know that there was money expended out of that 1760 line, if you look in your general budget packet, there's 17, it's the 1760 jury and witness fees. I think they come from the county.
Well, they come from the county.
If it's a county case.
If it's a county case.
Yeah, just to keep it short. But for some reason, there's been activity in that line, and we need to determine why that activity is. So that's just a microscopic view of the hours and hours and hours of conversations that we've been having. I, I put Tom Hinkle on the spot, one of our most knowledgeable, long-term department heads, has got four divisions, completely transparent process. I would say that this has been the most collaborative budget process between our department heads, our elected officials. I, I look at some of these reports that's come from Mr. Stoller, probably the most engaged treasurer that we've ever had in the city of Mount Vernon, whether he likes it or not. So a lot of those reports were pulled, and I want you to know that, directly from our authority finance system, so that's our budget software. But we are bringing that information in to show you that, that's like, that's the behind-the-scenes stuff, that's actually what's being plugged in. So we're finding a lot of where these POs are coming from, where the activity's coming from, and you're going to see some negative accounts, you're going to see some things that you have appropriated or supplementally appropriated that don't quite jive with what we've intended to do for some reason. So we have to kind of figure out why it was operating that way, if it needs to operate that way, if there's a better way to operate it. And we've, and like I've mentioned in, I think, that message to you all, you see lines that say hide, or you see lines that's, you know, rename certain lines. There are better ways to do this. We've discussed this through all the department heads, through, through, you know, elected officials. This can be a more transparent, a simpler process that can make operating this government more effective and efficient, and that's really been the goal of this. That's why we also plugged in the narrative, Bruce, because there needs to be a more, a better process of getting more community involvement, getting council involvement. But right now, it needs to be even more collaborative with council, and that's why we want all of your input as we go into that, that work session on Thursday, and then another session, an official council meeting on the 16th. And Tammy mentioned that if there are any changes made to this document that council needs to know about it, well, of course, and that's, I kind of want your opinion on how we want to go about those changes.
Well, and I'm, and that's, I made that comment because there was a couple of things I was looking at, and you had said, oh, those will need change, and I just wanted people to know that tonight, should anything be a first reading of anything, that it's not going to, it's already got changes in it. I just wanted that to be.
So after, since I have sent this out, two things you need to know. One, I am the only person that has editing access to that document, and there's a reason for that. I don't, if there has been a change made, or if a change is supposed to be made, I want it all to come back on me. So, so I don't want anybody to say, well, who did this? Me, I'm the only one that could have possibly done it. So that's just some accountability here, that way we don't have too many cooks in the kitchen. Number two, I want you, I want you all to know and the public to know that this is a collaborative process, is, you know, the first draft is likely, unless I'm just really good at this, probably not, is not going to be the final result, because we've still got projects to talk about, we've still got priorities that we want to mention. If, you know, the public comes in and says that, you know, we want to build whatever, and you guys determine that that's something we want to do, then that's the direction that we go. But the question I have is, how would you like me to indicate that there have been a change, there has been a change made? There's a comment section, I could highlight it, what would you prefer?
Put a different color on the.
Yeah, just highlight.
Different color on it when we go through it, it just jumps off the page at us, so we know my changes have been made.
That would work.
Maybe in the, maybe in the comments section.
Yeah, you could.
You know, what, maybe what the number was and what it is now, or why briefly or so.
See, my job as, as council president, to me, is more global, is to see where, where the, the bottom line is. And I like where you did in the narrative, where it's going to go back to the different committee chairs, and, and hopefully this year, even though it's, it's a little late this year, those committee chairs will look at their particular committee in particular to see where the budget is and where they're comfortable and not comfortable with, with those budget items. But I, I want to know what the carryover is going to be, I want to know where we are, what we spent last year, what we're going to spend this year, what our anticipated revenue is going to be, and that comes from the treasurer. And, and, and so all the more global numbers I'm interested in.
Yeah.
And I expect the, the council to look at that, in addition to specifically what they have with their own committees.
Yeah. And just to set the table, you know, we are going to try to provide as much and as accurate figures as we can, but, you know, just to be as transparent and as honest as possible, we are behind because of a multitude of transitions and just trying to clean up what is essentially a mess in the auditor's office. And that team has been working diligently and tirelessly to do that. They've got essentially an entire, is an entirely new team, they're being trained and they're, I mean, they're kicking butt, but they're human and they can only do so much. So, you know, that's where we are, and that's the reality. But we're, we are going to do our absolute best to provide as much information and get a working product that's going to do the best for the city of Mount Vernon and be something that you can be confident with when you vote.
So we have three more minutes. So council, what do you want done in the next four days or three days between now and Thursday that's going to make you feel more comfortable with where we're at? What do, what do you need?
Well, one thing I want to know is exactly the days and times we're meeting, because there's been a lot of confusion with all that. So can we review that quickly to make sure we know? And what time and where?
Is it 6:00 PM on Thursday?
This Thursday, the 12th, right?
I will not be present at that meeting.
Is it?
Is that here?
Yes.
Downstairs or here?
What is your preference?
Well, these are to spread out downstairs, and we can see each other.
Yeah.
Where do you want it?
Can, can I just ask, the last time we were here, it was going to be the next three Mondays, so why did it go to Thursday?
Well, there is a, there is a Monday council meeting as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
So 6 o'clock this Thursday, correct?
Yes.
Where?
Downstairs or what?
We'll do downstairs.
Downstairs.
Okay, and then Monday?
My only concern with downstairs is, is these are open to the public.
The public notice that went out last week said council chambers for every meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
So we can change it with another public notice.
Okay, so have it up here.
Okay.
I just, I have a, I would have to leave at 7:00. I, I mean, that's the only thing I've got about Thursday.
And this is a, this is a work session, so it's not as formal, just so everybody knows.
So what time is the one on the 16th, then?
I can go over the schedule right here, I've got the notice out, and I will forward it to everybody as well. The public work, the next work session will be 6:00 PM Thursday, December 12, that's this Thursday, that's up here, council chambers. There will be a special legislative session when the, when the budget will get a second reading theoretically, that will be 7:30 PM, regular start, start time, Monday, December 16, that's a week from today.
7:30.
Council chambers again.
Okay.
And then if needed, if necessary, there'll be another work session, 6:00 PM Thursday, December 19, again in council chambers. The next and the last regular council meeting of 2024 is December 23, that's two weeks from today, Monday, 7:30. And if needed, we can go to December 30 for another council meeting. That's not on the public notice, that hasn't been announced, but that is an option that we have.
You said, you said 6:00 PM on the 19th.
6:00 PM on the, on the 19th, 6:00 PM on the 12th, 7:30 on the 16th, and 6:00 PM on the 19th.
I cannot be here the night, so.
If it's a Thursday, it's 6:00.
Right.
If it's a Monday, it's 7:00.
7:30.
Anything else council needs for them to research between now and Thursday?
If, send an email, stop ends, call, text, whatever.
I would guess if there's any way at all, Paul, to, to, I guess, have council feel confident that there's going to be carryover. I believe that there will be.
There is.
I believe that there is or will be, but is there a way to show that on paper?
Well, yeah, and in several of these, you know, if you look at, go ahead and flip over, well, actually, yeah, the non-general fund, if you look right up front at your 201 fund, you're going to see at the bottom, you know, we're able to tell you the anticipated revenue is 1.2 million. The anticipated carryover is over $486,000. So we have budgeted based on that figure alone at 1.685 million for the streets fund. So with that particular fund, we know exactly. And if you flip to right behind it, the state highway improvement fund, we know 135,000 because there's an anticipated revenue of 75,000 and an anticipated carryover of 60. I would absolutely love to do that with every one of those, we're not there yet. I anticipate next year, which, you know, one day, we would be able to do that with every single fund, and I, I have no doubt that we will get there, because as Paul and his team are able to reconcile these and get a better accurate figure of where we are financially, we'll be able to do similarly to the county. When they are done with a month, they shut down the budgetary system and within what, two days, three days, they've closed the month.
I think it's that. We're lucky if we get it done before the, the next month.
Okay, so we're, we're a bit over here, so why don't we just do this? Let's just start shooting, you want questions to come to you?
Bring them.
Yeah, okay, let's just do that.
That would be better, so I can consolidate them, get a document, get your questions answered, and then we can start digging into the meat.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have your work cut out, will you?
No kidding.
Now we're going to move to the Parks and Rec, Mr. Miller, to discuss the shade tree commission update.
We have Dr. Brown with us from the Shade Tree Commission to give us the annual update on what the Shade Tree Commission's been up to. So, Dr. Brown, you can have, you got till 7:00?
I'll do my best.
Okay.
I only have three pages double-sided. Now, it, it's been a good year, we've got a lot done in the shade tree again this year. We did our Tree City application, we've been approved for the 2024 year. Last year, we planted 418 trees, we pruned 500 trees, we only removed 44, which is great. We went from having trees on the roads during every storm to where we hardly have anything at all. I think our last storm, when we had a tree that was in a road, it was actually a residential tree, it wasn't a city tree. So we're doing very well with that program. We have over 1,800 hours of volunteer time, so we've been kind of busy, but we get a couple of things done. So some of the things we did last, this last year, we did a, it was a pilot project, a private, public-private program where we went in and helped replace some trees in an area, and then they in turn helped fund the watering of the trees. It worked out very well, so it's something that we're going to keep in our pocket as we move through some of the programs that we're doing with growth in the city and some of the things. So we've kind of worked out some of the bugs, we know some of the things we don't want to do again, and some of the things we'd like to repeat with that, so that, that turned out well. This last year, we did the Arbor Day program at the Head Start, Knox County Head Start. It was kind of fun, I was out placing flags, and one of the young guys came up and said, what's that? And I said, well, what's it look like? He said, a flag. And I said, yeah, you're right. And he said, what's it for? I said, a tree. He said, what kind of tree? And I said, what do you want? And he said, apple. It was like, all right, so we were planting shade trees, but the modern woodsman called and said, hey, we'd like to help out with this. So the modern woodsman bought apple trees, so now the, the Head Start has a, they have a little garden that they do, now they have apple trees in their garden, too. So that worked out very nicely, we, we got them shade, in a few years, they're going to have a lot of shade, and they're going to have apple trees. Schelmar Park is really looking good, we put a new fence in there this year, took out the old fence, fenced off the driveway to the, the new industrial complex there, and just kind of got the, the thing a little more secure, keeping people off the tracks, keeping the balls out of the, out of the places they shouldn't be, so that's, that's looking really nice. I don't think we'll be in the park with any other projects here in the near future, we've got it pretty much where we like it. We made, the Career Center students made an arch like we've used in our port parks, we had one made for Arch Avenue Park, and then the power companies come in and said, oh, you can't do this, and you have to move these things. So it's sitting on the side right now, and it will go in once everything kind of works out with that. We added three new members this year, so I have six total citizens in the program, three of them brand new this year, two of them have been overloaded with some of the projects, but we're getting there, we'll get there. As we get everybody up to speed, we'll get back on track. So having all that happen, we're a little behind where we would normally be at this time of year, but, but we'll get there. We applied for an ODNR grant this last year, didn't get it, but it was a good experience, and we know what to do, and we've got some other grants coming up for next year that we'll work with. We did a consult with Hartland Commerce Park about trees in that area with their new park and back in along the industrial area. I have a meeting with Jeff on the 20th to go over what we've got in mind, and that, that may work into that public-private thing for watering those trees again, we'll just have to see how that works out, how we can work that out. Tanner, before he left last time, started to buzz on B-City. But the B-City program's going very well, Quentin helps manage that, we do a lot of things with that. We've, this year, the Town and Country Garden Club came and, and gave us $1,200 towards pollinators for the year. So a few years ago, we planted daffodils on the bank of the Cozing River there by the BNO, got dug out when they put the new sidewalk in, so this year, the Career Center was in there, and they planted 1,200 daffodils again this fall. So that's going to look really good in the years to come. We also, last year, we, we put in 68 trees at Hiawatha Park, really going to make a nice big change there. And along the ditch on Beach Street, we did sycamores to help suck up that water for our stormwater. I got it in. Brian always likes it when I say stormwater, yeah. Just like, this last week, we planted 24 pollinators in amongst the, the sycamores there. They'll be mainly bushes, but the whole idea is to bring more birds and bees into the area, and then we seeded the north side of the bank with wildflowers. If that goes well, you know, the, the parks, or, Tom was real happy about that, he didn't like mowing that ditch anyway. So if it goes well on the north side, we're going to try to do the same on the south side, but that could be a year or two away. Let's see, that's kind of where we are, what we've done, we've got some ideas. Our water truck, well, you know, I think it was new in 2016, and it, when they start that in the morning, it runs all darn day, running the pumps, running the lights, doing the things. So Randy looked it up, we spent $2,057 on gas last year just for the water truck. And, and the thing is, getting older and running all day is just beating it up, they've had days where they had to go out and just drive around town to cool it off enough to be able to stop and water the next time. So something we've talked about and we're pretty sure we're going to do is we're going to do an upgrade, there's a company that makes a palletized unit, it's got the water tanks, it's got the generator, it's got the pumps, everything on it, they can slide it right into the bed of the dump truck, and the dump truck doesn't have to run all day. So we're going to cut down on fuel costs, and the goal is to make the dump truck last longer. The way we're using it right now, we, you know, Randy's concerned, he's got a year maybe or two. If we do something like this, maybe we can squeeze another three or four before we have to worry about doing that. And the system is designed so it would fit into a pickup truck, so we wouldn't necessarily have to replace it with a dump truck that we've been using. But that was, at the time, it was our first, first shot at it, so we went with a dump truck and water tank and kind of did our thing, and it's worked well, but we've got, we've got a better option coming. And it's worked well, but we've got, uh, we've got a better option coming. Um, one of the programs that we're starting this year is, during our tree inventory in two thousand sixteen, we, we came up that we, on city property, had eight hundred pear trees, the Bradford pears. Well, they've been identified as invasive about five years ago. Finally, now, you can't plant them. So, this year, we decided it would be a good time to start a removal project. So, we've identified eighty trees right now and we're still waiting for some of the bids to come in on, on the removals. But the plan is to remove those eighty trees and replant with other pollinator-friendly trees in those areas.
Those are non-fruit-bearing?
Well, they were supposed to be non-fruit-bearing. But Mother Nature does its thing. And, uh, now, if you drive down seventy-one and, or anywhere around Columbus on any of the freeways in the spring and they're lined with white blossoms, those are pear trees. They're, they, um, grow very quickly and they spread and they, they beat out the natural. So, all our, our native plants are getting beat down and, and discouraged by the pear trees, so.
To give an example for people who don't know where they are, behind Yellow Jacket Stadium, those are all pear trees. They stole their leaves the last time I went.
Yeah, they, they're, they dropped their leaves.
They hold them forever.
Yeah.
And right behind the stadium, across from the new church, across that stadium, those are all those pear trees.
Those are all pears. They're on, that's one of our areas we're going to hit this year. That's our plan. So, um, so we'll see how that goes this year and what we can do. And hopefully, the, the goal is, we picked eighty because we had eight hundred. We thought, well, let's, let's make it a project. Depending on how things go, we could do more or less in the future. But our ultimate goal is to get the pear trees off. And those are just city property. There are still plenty on private property that we didn't have inventoried. So, um, Licking County did a program, um, through a grant where if you had a pear tree in your, on your property, they would give you a voucher for another tree so you could remove your pear tree and replant it with a tree.
Interesting.
So, when we talk in grants and things, that's the kind of stuff we're looking to do, but, you know, takes time and money. Let's see. Okay, so, the square, you know, we were in here last couple of years, replaced a bunch of trees in there. And, uh, last year, at the, this last year, at the Tree City banquet, we were in Worthington and they were able to get their green space. If you've been through Worthington, um, they have four quadrants along the center. They were able to get that designated as a level-one arboretum. So, it's now, it's guaranteed to be green space. They can't come in and add roads and streets and things through it. So, we got to talk about, we thought, you know, that would be a good thing for this public square. It's a gem of the city. It's right downtown. People use it. It's a great place. We get a lot of activity in there. So, we qualify for the level-one. So, the plan is to, uh, get a level-one arboretum and hopefully dedicate that here for Arbor Day this spring. Some of the talk has been to, since we usually do schools, is to maybe bust the school kids in for the day. Or some. We, we got a lot of work on that one yet, but it's a good idea. Let's see. Cougar Drive is on our lan- our plan for this next year. We, you know, we did the, we called it the gateway, the gra- the area between the high school and the Nazarene University property, all around the athletic complex, the bus garage, all that. So, Cougar Drive is our next area to, to move into. So, we'll be redoing, planting trees along there. And then, uh, Liberty Park, when the, when the Statue of Liberty got decorated, or decorated, dedicated, we had arborvitae sitting out there. Those actually were for another project. They, Wade and Gatten just brought them in and put them there, so we had something there to make it look a little nicer. But, you know, I got a lot of comments. Those things will grow up and cover the statue and it's like, yeah, we know. So, so, so they've been removed and they've gone on to their, their ultimate home. Um, and we do have a couple of varieties that we feel that will, um, there are yew, a hybrid of a yew that will be able to be planted there and be manageable. So, Scott Zimmerman's all in for it for, as far as the maintenance of it. So, those will come in here through the winter months sometime as we do our planting. How much time do I have left as I rattle on here?
About six minutes.
All right, so. Oh, you'll see some trees come in at the Y, YMCA this year. We, uh, I met with Nick Clark, we walked around. We've got a idea for twenty-one trees in that area. The Career Center will be in this fall or spring to plant those, assuming he gets the tree pits built. On Mulberry Street and Chestnut Street side, we're on a bank and we'd like to get tree pits built to get them up to level with a parking lot because the, the idea is to get that shade in the parking lot. Our goal with parking lots is forty percent of shade coverage at maturity. That cuts down on our heat island. It gives us the look we're looking for. You know, if you've ever gone to Ohio State, some of the buildings they're doing now, you look in the parking lot and it looks almost like a forest. So, that's, that's where we're trying to head. And with that in mind, I didn't have it on here, but, um, I talked to Zach Green about the Health Department and some of their plans there down on Mechanic Street and how they want to do things in their parking lots. So, once, once the Sandusky Street project is completed, we're going to help him with his parking lot and get some trees in his lot. Okay. Well, the Board of Education there, um, Pine Street, we'll be planting some trees there. And then, another little project that's come up that we're working at is disc golf. We've got some people in town that are interested in disc golf. We've got some ideas about where to do it. We just don't have it all worked out yet. But the goal with that is to make, um, you know, it's cool to have a disc golf, but if we're going to do it, let's do it right. Let's build it so it can be sanctioned, so we can get sanctioned tournaments in here and, you know, bring people into the community, bring people into the park. So, as we go through, that'll be, uh, be.
I'm on the county parks board and we're redoing the one out there on Thayer Road and they would like to have tournaments out there. So, they're, they're redoing a lot of it.
Oh, so we're going to have competition if we do it.
Yeah.
All right. Well, you can have more than one golf course, right?
Sure.
Might not have more than one.
And the NAS has a nice, yes, golf course.
So, so it just, it's something that we're kicking around, talking about. So, questions about anything?
I would have a question about, does Shade Tree do, I'm sure you do. You work with, uh, like, Foundation Park and B-City and the city with, dealing with the invasives down along the riverbank and over in, and in the city parks?
Yes. Yeah, we did a project, um, two years ago in the conservancy area, which is behind the, the First Knox Pavilion. That was just overgrown. It had alamata, ala- ah. You got it. There were some in there that had stems. They were two and three inches in diameter, like fifteen stems. And Scott Zimmerman started the project with us and he'd cut a few down. And here, there was a tent in there. You'd never would have known it was there. There were people living in amongst it. So, anyway, we rented the agricultural head, ground it all out, then we planted sixty trees in there. And then, Scott's been working at keeping it down, keeping the invasives down. This spring, I didn't have it on my list, forgot about it. I had, um, Mike Prito was in West Ariel, which is now Delano Prairie. On the east side of that, we had a large batch of honeysuckle and autumn olive. We've got that cut out and Scott's working it. Scott does, he contracts with us, complete care and maintenance. He does our fertilizing, pruning. He sprays for bugs and he also sprays to get rid of our invasive stuff. So, we are working at, at doing our, what we can to get the invasive out of our parks.
Same thing, y'all worked on the, on the west side, across the river, west of the river, where we had that.
Where the, yeah, where the encampment was?
Right.
Yeah, that's not actually city property, but that, the B-City program group did that. They came in there after it was cleaned up and planted. They got, um, donations of, uh, tree starts and things and planted, gosh, they planted about a hundred trees and things in there, a bunch of seeds. And Scott's been in, um, keeping it kind of knocked down so that we don't have the invasive stuff grow up.
Good, so there's an ongoing process.
Yeah, it'll be, yeah. Well, when it comes to invasive, you know, they're, they're very, uh.
Resilient.
Resilient. Yes, they, and they're, yeah, they will.
But I just want to make sure it's ongoing now.
Yes.
That's good news.
Yeah, when, when we started with, uh, West, with Ariel Park, we, we set up a three-year plan. And this twenty twenty-five will be our third year of that plan for invasive removal in spring. And then, we'll see where we are and what we want to do and then kind of take it from there. But, but Scott, we work with Tom. Tom Hinkle has a, a plan with his, what he does and we do what do we do. And with all of us together, we kind of get it there.
But on Beach Street, did you put plants in or you seeded that?
We put plants in.
You put plants. How many different varieties?
Um, there were twenty-four of them. I think there were five different varieties. I didn't bring the list with me.
They're plugs?
They were, they were, no, they were two, one and, one and two gallon pot, pots. And then, um, then we spread a lot of seed.
Sure.
The, the kids brought rakes. You know, it was like six degrees outside. But we had rakes, they broke up the ground a little bit and then, um, Quentin went, went along with his spreader and spread the seed on the bank itself, so.
Those were plants, okay.
So, we've got plants and seeds, so we're hoping to get things going there.
Well, thank you. Thanks for requesting to come in for your annual update. I think, um, you guys do a wonderful job for the city and it's a, it's a, it's a wonderful environmental project.
Yeah.
It's appreciated by everyone.
We enjoy it. You know, we wouldn't do it if we didn't like it. So, I, I end every, every time I come to talk to you, like fifteen years now I've been doing this, remember me at the budget time. You're talking budgets, but remember me.
We appreciate the work you do, Dr. Brown.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Dr.
Thank you.
We're going to adjourn the Parks and Rec Committee. We're going to move on to land use and development. Mrs. Keener, discuss the municipal building construction.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, my plan for this meeting is just to keep it short for everybody who talks. So, I will be watching the time just so that nobody takes, um, the whole committee meeting. I would like to have the Safety Service Director start us out, um, talking for just a couple of minutes about this annex, concept designs. I know that there was a press release or a presser thing on, uh, last Friday. So, I think we have some general information about it, but the project phases and the timeline overview, I think that those are really important to go over with council. And I think that he may be able to answer some of the questions that we would have anyway. So, Tanner, I'm going to start the timer.
Okay.
And I'll give you four minutes with the expectation that you'll take five.
I will fail, yes. All right. In front of you, council, you have a document from Hazuti, which is a consulting firm regarding building plans. That is following a walkthrough over at Heartland Commerce Park. You also have a proposed development plan regarding the City Hall Annex, the Police Station, and the Justice Center. So, when I refer to the Justice Center, that is the courthouse. Also have a press release that was issued today regarding a listening tour over the course of January, February, and March, where we have scheduled and dated and booked three different listening sessions or public sessions, whatever you want to call them, during January, February, and March. January, we will discuss the Police Station. In February, we will discuss the City Hall Annex. And in March, we will discuss the Justice Center. Any questions on those? Cool. All right. Now, we will discuss the MKC conceptual planning document. I do not want to call this a design because that would imply that this is what's happening. All right? So, this is a conceptual planning document provided by MKC that was delivered, Brian, two weeks ago?
Couple weeks ago.
Yeah. So, very new, very fresh. All right. In this design, on the front, you can see City Hall, right? City Hall remains. Now, it will be redesigned inside, but City Hall as a structure remains. Behind it, uh, we blow out the bathroom. Matt's not super happy about that. Sorry about that.
No, we do not blow out the bathroom. That got changed.
Okay.
No bathrooms are affected in City Hall.
No bathrooms are affected. All right, we're keeping the bathrooms. Good news, guys. All right.
That's what's happened.
So, the back of City Hall does get, uh, edited, shall we say? Bathroom remains. But, uh, we build on to the back of this block. So, if you want to keep flipping open to, um, using prior discussions, uh, public comments and whatnot, this is taking into consideration here on page, well, there's no pages. So, was it four?
Yeah.
Yeah, just basement, if you look at that. You see the floor plan, uh, of the basement. So, up front, just kind of orient yourself here, you're seeing the existing floor plan here. Then, it goes down into the basement. And that's, so in this, in this scenario, you're going to see two options. There's a, uh, two retail space and a three retail space option. So, in this case, we've got some storage, we've got some emergency response areas, bunk room, uh, and then retail storage. Regardless, in this area, you're seeing just a lot of storage down there in the basement. All right, now, on the first floor, this is one of two options. In this first, uh, look that we're looking at here, this is a, a floor plan option. Now, again, all of this is fluid, but in this, uh, first, you know, draft, um, you've got a retail one and retail two. This is, uh, with the floor plan proposal of two retail spaces. This is, this would, uh, to kind of put your mind in that frame, this would be where the current retail spaces are on this block. So, Clock Shop and Hearing Aid location here on the corner. You can see here, we've got some private offices, uh, some cubicles for the, uh, let's see, the Water and Utility Office up front. We've got the Tax Office. So, you just kind of see the layout here. If you flip over one page, this is the same kind of layout, except we've broken up retail space and made that more appropriate for three retail spaces. Any questions so far? All right.
How accessible is the Water and Utility to the public?
So, you're walking in, you see the public entries right there on the square. It's, everything's the same. Uh, you hang a left and you're right into the Tax Office. That's the current engineering office. You walk back into what now does not exist. Or, or I guess you're walking into a gravel lot, I suppose, or, or into another building. Six or eight, Chestnut. That's where the Water and Utility Office is. Is that, can you kind of see that design? Does that make sense?
The orange space.
Yeah, that orange space, well, it's kind of the blue, but, yeah, you're going into Water and Utility. And, uh, right now, what is that gravel lot is basically a distribution delivery area, so. All right, second floor, this is where a lot of the magic is happening. This is where you currently are, up front. So, we are giving Matt this room. Don't worry, you'll get yours. In the back end, you're going to see a larger, uh, a whole array of offices. We have several folks. Poor Tom Hinkle's in the basement. He's never seen the sun. There's a whole Kid Rock song about that. So, we've got a department collaboration space. We've got, uh, we've got a kitchen, we've got engineering up there, conference rooms. There's a lot more opportunity for the, you know, the actual administration of the, of the city to function here. And we're not all offsite and we can actually communicate and cooperate with each other. What a novel idea. All right, and third floor, since Amber's going to gavel me down here in a second. There it is.
No, that was me. I had the paper hit that.
Yeah. All right, there's city council chambers. I want you to pay attention to the fact that you will have a workspace, um, and a kitchen. No, I'm just kidding. So, a lot of this is still very, again, very fluid, but you will be able to enter from the back. Something right now, if you enter right here, not only is it not safe, but people, if they want to enter into city council chambers, they feel like they're entering, as we just witnessed, they feel like they're entering right into the magic and, uh, people are kind of uncomfortable by that. So, you should be able to, not only is it much larger to accommodate more people, but, uh, people should be able to enter from the back. It's more secure that way and, uh, they can feel more comfortable to enter the room with stuff going on. So, there's that. We've got, uh, room for, uh, some AV operations. I'm sure Bruce will appreciate that. Yeah, there you go. All right. And then, there's some workspace specifically for council. So, should you want to meet with department heads, administration, citizens together, um, you know, there's, there's that space off to the side specifically for you. And then, after a particularly tough council meeting, we've got an outdoor patio for a smoke break. Just kidding.
Great job.
Thank you.
I would like to give council just some time to ask specific questions, um, not necessarily just based on this concept, but I think that some council has had questions about other things such as, you know, other reports that were done and I think timeline questions. I think that the timelines that were provided are a helpful, um, outline. But I'm going to allow council to ask questions to see how they feel about it. So, Mel, if you are okay to start with you, if you have any questions?
I do it right now. Thank you.
Okay. John?
Not at the moment.
Not right now. Thanks.
Bruce?
When are we expecting to start?
So, specifically with the annex, and this is a conversation that Matt and Brian and I had, no, the, pardon me, the mayor and the engineer and I had.
That's fine.
So, be so informal. You know, a big part of the, the conversation that I think was missing was the transition plan. You know, we, we know we need these buildings. We know we need to do something, right? The plaza building's not in great shape, being generous. How are we going to keep the operations of the government operating? How are we going to keep the operations of the government operating? How are we going to take care of the safety of the people that are in those buildings? And it came to that, you know, something that I didn't mention as we were just walking through this was if we do this, if we do the Annex and the Police Station in tandem, which right now, you know, you guys have already approved the RFQ for design for the Police Station and the Justice Center, courthouse. But this piece has been missing. The Annex has been missing, when really, we probably should have changed the strategy early on and did this first. And the reason for that is we can operate... It will be tight, but we can operate with the court in this building until we find a permanent home for the court. And that's why I think this, and I think we've all kind of determined that the best foot forward is to put this as a priority project. And that's kind of what, if you look at, Janice, if you look at the... Which I have lost conveniently because there's a thousand pieces of paper here. But if you put... If you look at this, this proposed development plan, you'll see this preps for the City Hall Annex and Police Station first. So if you follow that kind of, that plan down, essentially what we do is we allow for court operations to take place in this building. And as the judge has stated before, you know, once a court is in a building, it operates as a court until it's not in the building anymore.
This used to be the... We had some court when...
Yeah, this was a courtroom.
When Barton Blair was the judge, this is where he sat.
Otho Two.
Otho Two, yeah.
There you go.
So when do you plan on starting?
So as soon as you give me... First off, we do a listening tour. We get the public input. Again, this is just a conceptual design. But as soon as counsel gives us the approval, we get all that input, counsel gives us the approval to go out to a bit... Well, go out for an RFQ. We've got the... Got to have your approval for a C Mar for this project as well, because I think that would be the right thing to do. And then on top of that, 25. We get going, we can start site prep now, we can go out for RFQ for design, get ready to start putting a shovel in the ground, and we got to aggressively do it. But if you're willing to make a hard decision, so am I, Janice. Let's tango.
You're saying to start it in 25?
Start the site prep and design in 25, yep. And that's what's laid out in this proposed development plan, yep.
And how long do you think it's gonna take for it to be finished?
Not great with a hammer, so we'll have to talk to... Have to talk to that C Mar.
So Brian...
And do you have enough money for this?
Well, and that's another question, right? That's where Tammy Wood starts taking potshots at me. No, that's...
You've been dodging.
No. Well, so this is... And this is a question that Mr. Miller has brought up, and this is, you know, something I kind of want to lay out for the public and lay out for counsel. You know, if I don't know what we're gonna build, who's gonna build it, when we're gonna build it, where we're gonna build it, and, you know, what it's gonna look like, how can I possibly tell you how much it's gonna be? So these are the conversations that we need to have, and we need to be very honest with ourselves, and we need to do it quickly, because frankly, these conversations should have happened, looking at that building, 15 years ago. And, yeah, and we have to make... Unfortunately, we have to make a really tough decision really soon, whereas we could have been making a string of less tough decisions when money was as cheap as it ever was. So we got to do some hard work. And it's not gonna be pretty, but as I've said in the past, you know, if you want to be popular, sell ice cream.
Tammy, did you come up with a question?
Well, then here's another potshot. If we're supposed to make a quick decision and pull the trigger and say, yes, this is a go, we have the right to ask, where's the money coming from to pay for it?
You are, right. So we're in the... We're in a position to where we have to do something. So we have to make a decision on, you know, how that... We have to consider the operations of the government and how it has to continue, and then we have to make a decision on where are the other sacrifices going to be made. So I don't disagree with you, but we have to also consider that something has to happen because that building won't continue to stand. And frankly, I am willing to say, as I think the chief and I had this conversation today, what I don't want to do is become a story in a textbook about municipal government, and there's just a, you know, nice glossy picture of that building collapsed in on itself with people being drug out. So... And I don't mean to sound like panicking, but Rob works in there.
As one of the people who would be dragged out, I'm not in favor of that.
Yeah. And I know it sounds like hyperbole, but it's not.
I think that we know the condition of that building is bad. I mean, Mel and I were on a committee starting three years ago where we did talk about the fact that the Annex needed to be first. But what has actually come of that has not been much. I'm glad to see design concepts.
Concept. Easy with that design word.
But that is why I want counsel to ask questions. I don't expect administration will have all the answers to these questions tonight. This is to let them know what we want to hear about moving forward. So I think that Janice has good questions about timeline. Tammy will continue to ask questions about funding. But first, we're gonna go through...
Look, I... I want to say, this is beautiful.
Well, thank you.
It is a very nice concept.
I did it myself.
But let's finish...
Just to, if I could. Tammy, question is not unfounded by any stretch of the imagination. Like, I agree. I agree. It's just I can't wait to continue having these conversations so we can get to the point where...
Figure out where that is.
Yeah, where we go with that.
So Jay, do you have questions?
I don't have a quick comment. I appreciate that we have the Police Station up first in January, because I think of all the things that we're talking about, we know we have the land, we have the initial concept. I'm glad the listing sessions are first, and if we can get the police out of there, then that just gets us... Just gets one thing done.
I think it is the...
Encourage us to do that as quickly as possible.
Collective opinion that the Police Station is the least controversial and is the most site shovel-ready.
Let's go.
So I think, yep.
Well...
Oh, boy.
I feel the eyes on that. But I agree with the mayor and the Safety Service Director and all of council. The municipal building where the courthouse is, the Police Department, and the Law Director and probation, everybody, that needs to change. It needs to be taken care of as soon as possible. It would have been nice that it didn't happen, but it didn't happen. So this is tough for council and the city to have to make decisions. This is gonna be probably between this and the wastewater treatment plant over the next 10 years, probably one of the most expensive, if not the most expensive endeavor the city has accomplished. All right? Most I did say accomplished. But I have... I have... One thing I have is this latest report with Pazuti Solutions. It did mention in the report significant cost savings going to Heartland Commerce Park. Now, I do have seven additional questions, but because we're out of time and we're a little bit over, I'd be more than happy and willing to provide those to the mayor's office for him to answer, to provide those answers to City Council and the public at another time. And I will also congratulate the mayor on the listening tour. I think that is an absolutely wonderful, great idea to have that occur. So I thank you for getting that accomplished. So that's a good step in the right direction towards transparency.
Good advice.
I agree. I agree. But I do have these seven questions. I'll be glad to make copies to provide them to all of council and the media if they want them, and to anybody that wants them. And I can do that here at the end of council, make those copies and give to the mayor.
Would you be willing to, when you email them to the mayor, just email council as a whole, so that we all know them, the questions?
Yeah, that's fine. I can email it, or I can give you our copy. You want to email?
I like email.
Email.
Okay. Email. All right, I'll email.
We actually... Tanner said we could have built the building, except we had to print all this paper.
We can only afford two of them.
My goal really is to have another longer meeting, once we're a little bit more settled in the budget and settled in these concepts, so that administration can answer those questions. I do think it is responsible of council to allow them that time. This is a huge project. They need to research, they need to ask people that know more than them, no offense. But I think that when they know what we want to hear, I do have faith that they are going to come back with answers. They might not be the answers that we want to hear, but I think that they will be more prepared if we give them some time to accumulate that information. I will leave my questions off so that everybody can get a little bit of a break, but I really appreciate everybody putting that out there, and thank you to the administration for getting answers back to us, as I know you will. So...
We're gonna adjourn that committee meeting for land use and development. We're now recessed until 7:30 PM to begin the legislative person meeting.
Yeah, I'm going to call the legislative portion of December ninth, two thousand twenty-four, City Council meeting to order. Mr. Hill, please call the roll.
Bruce.
Mr. Severns.
Here.
Mr. Mahan.
Here.
Mrs. Woods.
Here.
Mr. Ruckman.
Here.
Ms. Keener.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Sevold.
Here.
We are in session. The indication, invocation this evening would be given by Captain Christine Moretz from the Salvation Army. Please rise to the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Oh, God, we come before you with gratitude this evening. We thank you for being a God of love who is with us now in this very room. Thank you that you never leave us or forsake us. We thank you for this season of Advent as we celebrate your coming to each one of us. We thank you for making each one of us in this room, every person in your image, with dignity and infinite worth. We thank you for the calling you have given every one of us to be good stewards of your creation, to love our neighbors as ourselves. I thank you tonight, God, for these, your servants, our mayor, our city manager, our city staff, our city council members. Bless each one as they make decisions on behalf of all the people from every walk of life here in our city. Grant them wisdom and guidance as they sit in this place of authority. And so we pray that you would be glorified tonight through the decisions of this city council. Help us as we listen and respond to the needs of our community and to one another. We pray your kingdom come, your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. May your truth be revealed and your light shine brighter. We pray for strength and courage to do what is right and good for all citizens. May we put the interests of others above our own. May we act with love for the common good. May we be good neighbors as we care for one another. We thank you again for this council and all those who make this place we call home such a wonderful city. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Captain.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, in your packet are the minutes from the November twenty-fifth meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Not announced for motion for approval.
Still move?
Second.
They moved to second. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. They are approved. We do have petition and communication on the alley vacation petition. Any, any updates on that or just?
That would be referred to the Street and Public Lands Chair and.
I don't have any comments. We did get the.
Um, do you, um. It goes to, you would refer that to Municipal Plan Commission and then this plane would take it up and.
Okay. I'm surprised it didn't go there first, but it comes here before that.
Yes.
So then let's push it to the Municipal Planning Commission.
Push it on down.
Thank you.
We will do.
All right. We have three committee reports, counsel, for your review. I see no liquor control licenses or proclamations. We do have one person wanting to speak on matters of city concern, and that's Tanya Kent. Please come to the podium and, and set your name and address. And you have four minutes.
Good evening, counsel. How are you? My name is Tanya Kent. I live at two oh two Maplewood Avenue here in Mount Vernon. Lived here for a long time. As you know, I've talked to you guys many times about the dyke. So my property taxes went up and I still talk to my insurance agent and they said, yeah, my property is probably still of value, but the actual house on it, the property alone could be of zero value because now I live in an unprotected flood zone. My property went up a hundred dollars a month on my home. So that went up considerable, living in a flood zone that's not protected. I think you all would be very upset with that. And as you know, I've worked for about three years on this now, and I understand that there's processes to things, but we're still at a standstill. I understand that people are, you know, going down there and surveying things and doing things, but as far as mowing, moving debris, stuff like that is still not done on a basis. This spring, I went back to the dyke. In twenty years, that's the highest I've ever seen it. And I stood on the dyke behind my house and it was literally less than this from the dyke's top. So would you guys be nervous if it's not, you know, in code? I, I just find it very irritating and frustrating that I was told that there was no time, there was nobody to write a grant or to go after a grant, and now all of a sudden there's a twenty million dollar grant available for these buildings. I've been here for three years off and on in council meetings. Never heard of these buildings. In the last six months, these are the top priority of the city. I find it very frustrating for people on the West End that still have to pay these amount of taxes on properties and at any time we could be flooded out. The last time I had a flood was when I first moved here. My basement flooded. My flood insurance paid for my heater, my furnace, and my water tank. My flood insurance wouldn't pay for contents because I lived in a flood zone. And my flood insurance would not pay for any property damage besides my furnace and my heater, and my hot water heater. And that's across the board with insurance companies. So when we have floods like in Tennessee and the Carolinas right now in mountains and things are, you know, unpredicted now, I hope that you would consider you're going to build a twenty million dollar structure here without your infrastructure being secure. I find that rather appalling. Not only are you putting people in gen, in harm's way, you're putting our community and our buildings and the taxpayers' money in harm's way. Not only you're putting schools, it's not only the West End, it's the whole dyke. And to have a twenty million dollar grant that's an infrastructure, part of an infrastructure grant, and I realize that they are allocated for different things. And there's a lot of data that needs to be, you know, updated on the dyke to get money to be put towards it. But the frustration of West End people is when you work for twenty years to pay off your home and then your property is of worth no value because you live in an unprotected flood zone that you've paid property taxes on to your community for that many years. Do you all have anything to say about that?
We, we hear you. We just, this is, we just don't.
I know.
On this time. You know that because you've been here so much.
Four, four, I have four minutes. So my frustration also is all of a sudden you have a grant that's available for twenty million dollars, but in three years, nobody had any time or couldn't find any grants. When I found grants that were a hundred, zero pay, ninety, ten pay, seventy-five, twenty-five pay, and I was told by the law director that yes, there's payback that's needed, but you can allocate this much money towards the new buildings that are needed. When you put three to five million dollars in a building that's already going to be destroyed, when you could bake, when the walkthrough down here said it was going to be three million possibly to make it to code. So this money was three to five million taxpayers' money that's going to be to the ground when you could bring another building up to date for three, three to five million dollars and maybe utilize something on the West End that would bring more businesses to the West End and maybe some neighborhood grant money that would fix up the West End more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I curiosity, whatever happened to the ARPA funds that they were going to use to take away the insurance of.
The ARPA funds? The ARPA funds?
ARPA, yeah.
Yes, they went toward the consulting for the height. Yeah, come on up.
Can I have my four minutes?
We're just, yeah.
All right. So I'll, put me on the clock. All right, four minutes. So we have, we've been going door to door. We've been looking at elevations because there are some people we think that could get an elevation certificate. So the, we're trying to give them a preliminary. I am not a legal surveyor, so I can't do it for them. So we're doing that study. We have put significant money into surveying the dyke. We were doing hydraulic modeling because we don't want to fix the dyke to what FEMA, the flood is based on their nineteen seventy-five computer model. We want to think about fixing the dyke to a two thousand twenty-five computer model. The one thing, so how the intersection, let me talk about the intersection of opportunity. So if you go across the dyke, a bunch of these trees have numbers on them. We're in the process of negotiating with three different companies. We're planning to use stormwater utility money to do a timber harvest, and then we're partnering with small businesses to saw and dry that lumber and potentially use that in our new courthouse. So the projects are interrelated and we're trying to reduce the cost of the building where we have really nice walnut growing out of this dyke. So that's a pro, that's a thing that we're working on behind the scenes and that would help with the future recertification because in the clear zone that people talk about on the levee, there's two thousand plus board feet of lumber that we could use at a later date. So that's something we're working on behind the scenes. Hasn't been publicly announced, but that was a great time to talk about it. So we're working on getting a list of people that could go get a surveyor, get themselves out of the flood plain. The important thing to FEMA, a lot of these grants, we cannot go into it without a cost benefit ratio. Mike knows this. He's worked for the DNR. What we need to know is the value of everyone's homes in the flood plain. And, you know, to FEMA, we have to show at a minimum of one to one. So if we think the repair is going to cost X dollars, there has to be that many dollars of structures on the inside to, to balance that investment. The federal government will not give us a project that's less than a one to one ratio. Questions?
Yes, I have several now.
Yeah.
Okay. First, I get saving money. I think I've been posting about that.
Yeah, you have.
How can cutting lumber from trees on the levee, how much money is that going to save? The city annex or the courthouse?
I don't have those numbers yet, but if you, if most of the components are, you know, the desks, the different things are going to be made out of wood.
Desks, okay. All right.
And trim.
Okay, okay. I get that. And, and that's a wise, sustainable thing to do. I'm not about that, but I, I, next question, then I'll wrap it up. Okay? Value of homes. I would almost know that every home on the West End there that's subject to flooding is probably the same or more than what these three building construction projects are. I could be wrong. I don't know. I don't know. I'm not an evaluator of things. The other is, is we came up with a value of other buildings like Heartland Commerce Park and these other properties the city looked at for this project pretty easily. So I would think we could come up with values of homes on the West End relatively just as easy. But I guess, I'm sorry.
Those have to be.
I like everybody here.
They have to.
Let me finish, please.
Okay.
I like, and I'm trying to be polite. I am. I, I like everybody here. This is just a political discussion about how city money should be spent. I just want to make that very clear. And I'm not running for mayor while I'm at it, okay? I'm not. But this lady just stood here and talked to us that for three years, she has even brought grants, suggestions to the city. And we filled out a grant application for twenty million dollars for a building? First, when we have other options. I'm sorry. That's all I have to say. I think I've said enough.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Okay, and counsel, your packet are all the resolutions, meaning one, for, for our agenda tonight. Are there any additions, any additions or corrections? Not assume the agenda is approved by consensus. We move now to resolutions. We have no resolutions for third, second, or first reading. Is that correct, Mr. Hill?
That is correct.
We do have an ordinance for third reading. That's ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty-five.
Wait a minute.
We have resolutions for first reading.
We have three resolutions for first reading.
Okay. I don't have that, that was said, okay. That came later. Okay, resolution for first reading, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one twenty-eight. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one twenty-eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director to acquire employee dishonesty and faithful performance of duty insurance policy and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you. We're going to give this its first reading. I'm going to need a committee meeting.
Actually, I'm going to ask that the agenda for the meeting next, a week from Monday, be altered to add this so we can do a second reading.
Thank you. That's what I was going to ask. And can we cover this in a five-minute committee meeting?
Yeah.
Five minutes, please.
Okay. This resolution receives its first reading. Next resolution is resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one twenty-nine. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one twenty-nine, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the city of Mount Vernon to pay bills pursuant to section five seven zero five point four one D, and announce certification.
Mrs. Sevold.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules that require three separate readings and take resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one twenty-nine to its third and final reading.
Second.
They moved a second for suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Sevold.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Sevold.
Thank you. I move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one twenty-nine.
Second.
They moved a second for the adoption of the resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Sevold.
Thank you. Yes, we have some then and nows.
So I was really hoping not to have to speak today. And this came up late in the afternoon, but basically with this, we, we got the invoice before the purchase order was created. We did pay this bill. There's several different reasons why something like this happens and we're working to prevent them in the future. And this should be something that doesn't happen in the future as opposed to now. I got a feeling there's going to be some more at the next meeting.
Thank you.
And the other discussion, Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Sevold.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one thirty. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one thirty, a resolution to make appropriations for current expenses for the city of Mount Vernon, state of Ohio during fiscal year ending December twenty-one, December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Mrs. Sevold.
Give this its first reading.
This resolution receives its first reading. We move now to ordinances. First ordinance is for third reading. That's ordinance number twenty twenty-four days forty-five. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty-five, an ordinance to approve, adopt, and enact the August twenty twenty-four replacement pages to the codified ordinances, to repeal ordinances in conflict therewith, to publish the enactment of new matter, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash forty-five.
Second. They moved a second for adoption. This ordinance, any discussion? Mrs. Keener.
I'm sure everyone has had plenty of time to read all these pages.
Early.
Fascinating reading. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Sevold.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. That concludes the legislative portion of the meeting. We move now to remarks of the administration. Mayor Starr.
Thank you, Mr. President and counsel. Just a few things I want to bring you up to speed. I did want to do a plug for our PAC United group. The Mrs. Claus's workshop is coming up next Monday. You will all be working here. So anyway, sorry, you'll miss Mrs. Claus and all the cookies and everything that you're going to be having there anyway. But please share that with, with your friends and family. There is going to be a, a ribbon cutting for Pine Hill Independent Senior Living that is happening. There is going to be a ribbon cutting for Pine Hill Independent Senior Living that is happening at Ohio Eastern Star. That's this Thursday at 4:00. That is soon enough that if you wanted to make that and be back here for the work session, you could do that. And, but just make sure that you let the chamber know. And the third thing, today was, we spent a lot, Brian and I spent a lot of time out in the field going to different sites around, starting with the Knox County Regional Airport with two of our friends from Morpsy, Parag Agarwal and Jessica Kinsley, who Parag, they're both in economic development. Parag is predominantly concerned with transportation infrastructure. And then Jessica is with environmental concerns. So in my never, never-ending attempt to make friends on the West End, we did spend some time on the dike looking at the invasive species, the overgrowth, and the plans that we can do to actually move the needle on that. She is going to look up some of her notes that she said she did a very, she worked on a very similar project at Athens. The Hocking River goes through there and they had very similar issues. And so she's going to be getting back to us. But it was very good. We also looked at, it was planes, trains, automobiles, and the river corridor. So we looked at all of the things that we are doing from a transportation and an environmental standpoint, long term. And we really appreciate Morpsy coming up to Knox County and Mount Vernon to help us with some of this funding and help us with some of this planning. And again, reinforcing that this is, we want that, we know that we're part of a region. And that the things that we, that we do here, they go downstream. And so we need to make sure that we're being good stewards all around and we're making opportunities for people to conduct commerce safely, among other things. So that, I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned that. The last thing that I wanted to mention was a follow-up from last council meeting. And I touched on it with, within my update to you is the municipal planning commission, there was some requests to move that later in the evening. And after checking with our volunteer board members, they were really not anxious to go home and then come back after work to be able to make decisions for the city. A few of them said if that was the case, they would not be volunteering for the city anymore. Couple of them had childcare issues. And so we're keeping it at 4 o'clock on the second Thursday of the month of next year. Anyway, that is all. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Zires?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to apologize to Mrs. Woods. She does not take pot shots at me. We have playful jabs, but pot shots is not the correct term. But she does keep me honest and I appreciate that. She cares a lot about the taxpayer dollar and I think we can all appreciate that. Nothing wrong with that. Speaking of the taxpayer dollar, as we go into this budget season, you know, we've had a lot of transition. It's been a heavy year. So, and this council and this administration is, I think we've really collaborated and done a lot of big, bold things. So this is one more, one more in this calendar year. And I just ask for patience and give us some advance notice and we can, we can work as hard as we can to get you those answers. And as long as we collaborate to make this a better product for the people of Mount Vernon, I think we can do that together. Also want to thank Tanya for coming in. I grew up on the Ohio River. I was a river rat. Had, in 1995, the Ohio River came right to our door. If we would have stepped outside, we would have been in it, which is a little bit more imposing than the Coquoting River, not to knock our own Coquoting. But, so you don't have to tell me about floods. So we'll, we take it seriously. We've got a lot of projects. But I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time. So we'll take that, we'll take that into consideration. And again, want to point out, you can always, to the public, you can always contact your council members. You can always contact the administration. We've got questions@mountvernonohio.org. Send those. Todd will route those to the appropriate department or the appropriate department head or the appropriate elected official and we'll get your questions answered. I'll be honest, we do not get a lot of public questions. So engage in your government. And we'll be happy to work with you. We'd rather you come to us and talk to us and engage in that process as opposed to going onto social media where, as my grandfather said, opinions are like armpits. Everybody's got a couple and most of them stink. All right. Those listening sessions we've announced, that's, it's getting hot in here. We've announced those. We're going to get those to the press so they can share those out. It's already on social media. We're going to also be doing online surveys, three different ones. That way it's not, you know, convoluted. So everybody can opine on each one of those projects. Where also, the mayor has often said a favorite phrase of mine that your democracy does not come with an embossed invitation, which is true. However, we're going to prove him wrong. Because on the back of your water bill, we are going to put the dates for all these listening sessions. So in this case, your democracy does come with an embossed invitation. So we want people to engage in this process. We want to hear, it won't actually be embossed, I guess, but we're not, we're not doing that. But perforated invitation, I guess. Yeah. So anyway, we want you to engage with that and we want to make sure that it's in front of you and you have the information. And finally, I had a nephew born today. His name is Kylo Fisher Bowman. And I recognize that my nephew's name is Kylo and my daughter's name is Rin. We are not that big of Star Wars fans, but nevertheless, thank you to my sister for doing that. He was born 10 pounds and 11 ounces. So prayers for my sister. Yep, thank you. That is all.
Mr. Starr?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayville?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Warren?
A couple of things. At last council meeting, I told all of you that we would be hopefully seeing an easement for 18 East Vine Street for the electrical service. They have run into some trouble with the surveys and so we're going to hold that off until the new year. The issue is that they need to bring in more electrical service to 18 East Vine Street, the former Mount Vernon news building for the new uses. And to do that, they need an easement across a parking lot that the city owns, as well as an easement to then drill the cables into the ground and then across the city streets to provide the electrical service for the, the additional electrical service for the building. But we expect to see that at the first meeting in January. Secondly, at the last meeting, Mrs. Woods asked for if we could talk about what the Ohio revised code limits for then and nows or transfers. And we are currently working on those. Given the, the other significant issues with council, I'm going to hold off bringing some legislation on that to council until January. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Woods?
Oh, I get to go first. Lots of talk tonight about carryover and then the then and nows come up. And I will just speak from experience. It's really difficult to, to get to a ending balance when you have bills coming in you didn't even know existed. Because those affect, obviously, your year-end balance and most of the time those aren't budgeted for either. So I will only say these words that it's real easy to get people to stop doing that when you tell them they didn't obligate the city. They just obligated themselves to that purchase. It works really well. I'll just say that. I, I sit up here knowing that the one thing we do up here is control the budget and expenses and I put a lot of my heart into that. So I'll just leave my comments at that. Thank you.
Mrs. Seville?
Just want to say it was nice seeing the people brave the cold for the Christmas parade. It was nice seeing the people out. But it was cold. But that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Mr. Severance?
I want to see us try to make some progress on this dike. I don't know what that means, but I hear you. And I didn't, I did not organize thoughts before tonight about this, so, but I share some frustration that we've got to see some steps made, some actual steps made to get this rectified. So, thank you.
Mr. Mahan?
Appreciate all the work and I appreciate counsel being willing to have extra meetings. And I, this new process for all of us. And I think, you know, just have the public understand that it's organized, we're working together, we're hustling to meet a deadline. And we're, it's collaborative, in Mr. Miller's words. And I appreciate everyone working towards that end. Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
I will keep three, four words. Needs and wants. Needs and wants is what the city needs to address. Thank you.
Mrs. Keener?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. First off, I'd like to thank Mrs. Kent for coming and drawing additional attention to the dike. As someone who does not live very far from where she is, I also share some of the concern about that. And obviously, that is a big concern and to echo what Councilman Severance said, that's something that I would like to see. I know that there has been effort put into, but something I would like to see more progress on. That would be fantastic if we could get that. Also, somebody had to bring it up. It's only 16 days until Christmas. So need to get out there and get your gifts if you haven't already. But I also would like to draw attention to the Food for the Hungry broadcast. It is going to be this Friday. And anybody who would like to contribute, that's a fantastic local organization that contributes to many of the local organizations, food banks around the area, to help those less fortunate. And if you would like, you can go on to their website. I think you can find them on Facebook as well, but it's foodforthehungrycares.com to see where you can, what's that? Dot org. Thank you very much, sir. Yeah, yes, dot org. You can go on and look at the various drop locations and where you can actually contribute to perhaps help a family in need this season. So that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thanks, counsel, for being here and thanks to Sevilles for providing the float for our parade. It was cold, but it was a good parade. And for those fans that brave the cold, it was a fun time. Thank you, the media for being here and thank you, counsel. That being said, a call for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Move to second, we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned.